We'll move on to item 3A, Consider and Take Action to Canvas the Results of the General Election and Socorro Independent School District Bond Proposition. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you, Board President Gata, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. It's a happy day. It's a good day. I know we talked about it last night at the regular meeting, but we are here today actually to take the official action to accept the voter returns for the bond election and to approve the order canvassing the voter returns and also a certificate for the orders. There's two items that will be taken up. I mean, you received in your packets, I'm told, a copy of the certified results from Ms. Wise at the Elections Department, and if you'd like to review them and go through them or make comments about them, now would be the time to do so.
Do you have any questions or any comments?
No, sir.
If there are no comments or questions, so what you have there in front of you first is the order canvassing the results. The election was held on November the 7th, 2017, and it was for the following item: Socorro Independent School District Bond Proposition A: The issuance of bonds in the amount of $448,500,000 for the purposes of designing, constructing, renovating, improving, acquiring and equipping school facilities, and the purchase of necessary sites for school facilities, and the levying of the tax and payment thereof. The total votes were as follows: For: 4,077 votes in favor and against: 2,713 votes. So obviously, the bond election passed. And you have the order there in front of you, and I just noticed Ms. Luhon walked in. I wanted to recognize her and thank her for all the work that she did, helping us prepare the documents and actually running the election. She puts together all the notices and the forms, so if you would, thank you. And so the first item on the agenda will be 3A, Consider and Take Action to Canvas the Results of the General Election and Socorro Independent School District Bond Proposition A. Attached to the order canvassing the results will be a copy of the certified returns that you have received. They will be attached as Exhibit A, the tabulation of votes for the special bond election held November 7th, 2017. I understand there aren't any questions, so at this time, we would need a motion to approve and accept the certified results of the election as set forth in the order canvassing the returns.
Motion to approve, second.
Have a motion by Vaznada, second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any fair discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Gata, if I may?
Excuse me.
Just wanting to thank everybody for all your hard work, all your support to staff, Dr. Espinoza, staff and community members. Thank you all so very much for your dedication and your support for Socorro ISD. Again, we can't thank you enough. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Next item will be 3B, Consider and Take Action on Order and Certificate of Order Canvassing the Election Results of the General Election and Socorro Independent School District Bond Proposition A. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you again, Board President Gata. You have, and it's a requirement within the election code, that we certify the action taken by the board tonight to accept the official returns and to canvass those votes. There is going to be one additional item. I know that Mr. Nahada and Mr. Gondad are not here. There's a particular waiver form that we will review with them. I don't expect them, obviously, to object to the notice of the meeting, but the certificate for the meeting shows that this meeting was duly called and scheduled at an appropriate time, the proper notice was issued for it, and that the following individuals were present: Paul Gata, the president; Ms. Nahada, the vice president; Mr. Nahada is absent; Mr. Gonzalez is a trustee; Mr. Gondad, a trustee, is absent; Mr. Ayub, a trustee, is present; and Ms. Rodriguez, the trustee, is present. We now will approve the certificate that this meeting was held and that you took action to accept and canvass the votes as returned. And so the certificate provides that an order canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the bond election held on November 7th, 2017, was introduced and submitted to the board for passage and adoption. And again, it includes the numbers of the votes that were tallied: For: again, 4,077 votes in favor and against: 2,713 votes against. I'd ask at this time that the board approve the certificate showing that this action was taken tonight and it was properly posted at a meeting duly called.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Ayub, second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any for discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, number four, New Business. Consider approval resolution authorizing the expenditure of bond funds to reimburse Socorro ISD general fund for the purchase of real estate and that's necessary for and related to the bond program. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you. With the assistance of Paul Braden, our bond counsel for the district, we prepared a resolution that authorizes the board to reimburse the district for property that was acquired in connection with the planned projects for the bond. And Mr. Iantin and his team, it was necessary to close on some real estate transactions that were obviously already planned and incorporated into the bond program. There are four sites that are going to be used for the facilities that are identified and specifically called for in the bond. The Treasury regulations and state law allow the board, within 60 days of those expenditures, to say that they were part of the bond package, they were intended for the bond package, and you are going to approve that the bond proceeds are going to be refunded and reimbursed to the district's general fund for the expenditures that were made to acquire the property. So we have a separate resolution that has been prepared, and I don't know if you all have a copy of it. Did you receive a copy of the resolution? Okay. Okay, then I will read it because it has to be included in the record. So it's short, it's not that long, so with your indulgence, I'll read it. "A resolution declaring expectation to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt. Whereas, the Socorro Independent School District, the issuer, intends to issue debt for purposes of designing, constructing, renovating, improving, acquiring and equipping school facilities, and any necessary or related removal of existing facilities in the district and the purchase of necessary sites for school facilities collectively the projects. And whereas, prior to the issuance of such obligations, the district is to make expenditures for the projects from existing funds on hand, and it is the intent of the district to reimburse such funds with the proceeds of sale of such obligations. And whereas, under Treasury Regulation 1.150-2, the regulations, an official intent to reimburse expenditures with the proceeds of tax-exempt obligations must be made within 60 days of the date of the original expenditure. And whereas, the district desires to preserve its ability to reimburse the expenditures with proceeds of tax-exempt obligations." And we've done that, and we've met that timeline. Now therefore, be it resolved by the board of trustees of the Socorro Independent School District that the district reasonably expects to reimburse capital expenditures with respect to the projects paid with funds on hand from the proceeds of sale of tax-exempt obligations hereafter to be issued, and this resolution shall constitute a declaration of official intent under the regulations. The maximum principal amount of tax-exempt obligations expected to be issued for the projects for this round of the bond funds is $200 million. That's the first issue that's going out, and this resolution covers that first issue only. Obviously, the bond is in total larger than that. Passed and adopted this November 15th, 2017, Socorro Independent School District. And they'll have a signature by the board president and by Ms. Nahada because Mr. Nahada's not here. And so we need a motion to approve the resolution, as I read into the record, to allow for these expenditures to be reimbursed to the general fund.
Motion to approve. Have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any for discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, 4B, Consider approval construction delivery method for various projects in 2017 bond program. Ms. Iantin.
Tonight, we're going to be looking at the delivery methods that are required by the state of Texas in order to do this bond program. If you recall, in the past, we did something similar to this in the election in 2011. In fact, I believe each one of you have a little brochure. We've updated that brochure. It's the exact same thing that you got in 2011, but some of the policies and some of the information has been updated. This is reference. I'll have a PowerPoint presentation that kind of summarizes this, but if you need to, if we need to refer to this, it gets into more detail. It is required that the board approves a delivery method before we proceed with any type of construction or design work or anything that has to do with the bond. So at this time, I will start the PowerPoint presentation. If you have any questions, feel free to stop, and we can discuss it at that time. Of course, we're all aware that we did pass the bond. It was...
We're not on.
You're not on?
We're good now.
You're good now?
Thank you.
Okay. As we, as you're aware, that we did pass the bond, as you just approved the canvassing of the votes and stuff, and Mr. Blanco went through that. This is the summation of what the $448.5 million will include: the Socorro High School reconstruction rebuilds, the SAC number two, of course, our new schools, the three new constructions, the middle school and our two elementary school, and our high school improvements at Americas Eldorado and Montwood, our support services facility, and our elementary multipurpose room. And the map to the side basically shows the locations of each of those as a, for the legend. Financing for the 2017 bond, as Mr. Blanco stated and Mr. Russa, and we have been working at, there'll be three sales of the bond. The first one will be in January, February, in the amount of $200 million. And then each year after that, the following year will sell $150 million, and then the remaining $98.5 million will be sold in January, February of 2020. The bond rating is there. Finch is AA, Moody is AA, I don't know how, Mr. Russa, AA2, and AA-. And then the tax impact is on, as we have presented all through the bond, is the 10.6 increase, monthly impact on $100,000 home or per $100 valuation is $8.83 a month. So that is what we have been advertising and promoting throughout the bond, and this shows the sales of those, of those three sales. The board role in this, of course, you started out, we all started out back in early August or early June, July, and basically determined the needs. Y'all called for the elections, so those two bullet points, we have already completed. Tonight, we'll discuss the approval of the delivery method, and then we'll subsequently, we'll, you'll authorize solicitations. And basically, what that is, is to authorize facility and plan, and along with purchasing, to advertise for the various consultants and the whatever delivery method we decide on tonight, or the board decides on tonight. Then award the contracts, take action on any potential contact, contract changes, and of course, communicate throughout the process. The proposed timeline is, of course, we're here at November the 15th, and we're going to identify the delivery method. We're going to also request authorization to proceed with some RFQs and RFPs on the phase one projects, and we'll get into that. And then the five-year timeline is, will be July 1st of 2022 will be completion of the bond. The project planning to completion, of course, tonight, we'll identify the delivery method. We'll go ahead and start selecting professional services and, which is the architects and the contractors, whether we go CM, construction, competitive seal proposal, and we'll just discuss that a little bit later, land acquisition, design, the award, and then we get into construction, inspection, observation, the occupancy, and is the key thing, is the completion, and the punch list, and the closeout. Now getting into the delivery methods that are approved by the state of Texas, they're listed here, and then again, the references is that handout that I just gave you, is competitive bidding, which is our hard bid or our traditional bid, competitive sealed proposal, you'll refer to that, or hear it referred to as CSP, Construction Management Agency, Construction Management at Risk, or you'll hear it referred to as CMR, or CM at Risk, and then the Design Build. Those are the delivery method approved by the state for public school work. The district, back in 2004, to be exact, March 2nd, 2004, developed procedures that we have been following since then, as far as the selection process. It's an 11-step process for selection of professional services, the architects and engineers, or your consultants, and then the contractors. This is a guiding principle. We have shared this document with surrounding districts after we, after the board implemented it in 2004. It is also listed in that book. It shows openness and transparency and fair and equability, and it's timely and efficient. The general guidelines that we strive to enforce per the board are the local presence. By that, we use, and our track record shows that we use local architects and engineers and contractors to do our work. However, there is a specialty job that comes up, but 90% of the work is kept locally. I don't foresee anything in the 2017 bond that is anything that's a specialty project. And then, of course, we spread the work. And we have established a review committee that is made up of five individuals, and we'll get into that in a little bit. And then it also discusses prohibition on lobbying and solicitation. So that's, that's our Bible, so to speak, that we go by when we are in the process of selecting professional services and contractors. The administrative review committee is made up of, as I stated, five individual assistants, superintendent of operational services. Of course, that is now referred to as the chief operation officer. The assistant superintendent of business services is referred to as the CFO, not no, and the executive director of operation, director of facility and construction, and the director of purchasing. Their roles are basically to, once the projects are authorized for solicitation, we advertise them per the state law, purchasing puts them out, accepts them at a given time and a due date, and at that time, we tabulate them and evaluate all submitted, and then they rank candidates, and we rank them based on the established criteria. And the next slide is the criteria. On the left-hand side is the professional services, which is the RFQs, and on the right-hand side is the RFPs, which are associated with your construction managers at risk. Going into our phasing. Phase one, all along during the advertisement or the promotion of the bond, we've always talked about four projects starting initially. And those four projects are made up of the phase one schedule. That is the reconstruction of Socorro High School. We're going to ask tonight for the request for RFQs, RFPs, and then we'll, if the board approves, so we'll start the advertisement, and we'll bring recommendations back to the board in January, not December, but we'll do it in January. And Socorro High School will be completed over a process or phased. When I say phased, it'll be completed by 2022. So over the next three years, it'll be completed. The new elementary school and for Pebble Hills is our prototypical design. We'll ask for RFPs. We cannot go ahead and award that in December, and we will discuss that in our facility committee meeting at that time, because we have an existing contract that has some clauses in it that basically says that we can save money if we reuse that, that design. And that is to be completed in July of 2019. The new middle school at Eastlake, in the Eastlake area, we'll bring back recommendations in January, and the occupancy there is in July of 2020. And then our new SAC, we'll bring it also back in January, and we're looking at a completion date in, of December of 2020. So that's phase one. Is there any questions on phase one?
Mr. Gata?
I think the Socorro High School's too long. I mean, we're really talking four years here. You said 2018 to 2022. That's kind of long. Can we shorten that?
It can be shortened, but until we get a team together and work on that, yeah, I'm sure we can shorten that. But I want to be, I want to be comfortable with the timeline right now.
Mr. Gata?
One thing that I'm a little bit concerned about is the shortage of workers and materials due to the construction in Houston and Florida and Puerto Rico. I mean, you can already see the prices of materials going up and up and up. So are we going to have any problem? Maybe the three years that you're planning may be just about right.
That's why, you know, all along, I've said we're going to do an aggressive schedule like we did in 2011. That's why I want to get out in front and with the board approval and hopefully relieve some of that. I know we're going to be short. It's going to be tight because there's a lot of work in the area, and a lot of work because of the natural disasters are going to be impacting. But if we can give them a little bit more time, it might be something that works to our advantage. You know, if we can shorten the time, we'll shorten the time, but I feel comfortable with these times right now.
So are you going to request RFPs and RFQs on all four of these projects later?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Phase two would be the remaining projects, and that is, we will be coming to you with the request for solicitations in December on the support services and the high school projects, and then come back to you in February with the recommendations. And then you can see that the occupancy or the completions dates on those. Same thing with the elementary multipurpose rooms. In February, we'll wait to go out for RFQs because we don't want to burden the purchasing department, and then we'll come back in March, and that will, those will be phased over a period of time. The rest of the athletic improvements, and then the last project in this is the elementary number 31, which is the Eastlake, and that is our last project, and that's the five-year or the completion of the bond.
Any questions? Motion to approve. Mr. Gonzalez?
Just a motion to approve?
No, we're not there. Not there. At this time, if the board will indulge me, our real estate broker came into the room, and I'd like to introduce him before we get in very much further. Mr. McCluskey with CBRE has been working, we've been working close together on all the land acquisitions and putting pieces of parcels together, so we're going to be joined at the hip for the next few weeks.
Appreciate meeting all of you all, and really appreciate the opportunity to discuss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to put a face to a name.
Why, see, okay, the delivery methods, now we're getting into this particular item on the agenda. We have selected in years past on all the bonds that we have been doing, we either have done construction manager at risk, CM at, CM at R, or competitive seal proposal. In your, in your little handout, there's a blue box in, on one of the pages. It's essentially the same slide, and basically, what that says is that when we work with a construction manager at risk, the construction manager holds all the contracts. We work with him from day one, with the architect, throughout the whole process. We can have the buildings put out for proposal when the plans are not 100% complete. Normally, we like to get a guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, as it's referred to, with about 90 or 95% completion drawings. That's why the at-risk comes into play, but it's a guaranteed maximum price. We're doing that with our current elementary school that's under construction. CM at risk works very good with very complex renovation projects. It works good for larger projects, too, but it works very good with complex projects that have tight schedules and stuff. CSP or the competitive seal proposal is a little bit more flexibility. It's kind of like a hard bid. You have to, the architect and the consultants have to have 100% drawings complete before they put it out on the street, you know? So we don't know what the price is other than what the architect is telling us, and, you know, all along, because we don't have a construction manager working on the project, costing it out. So we put it out on the street when it's 100%, but we, CSP is a little bit different than the traditional hard bid is because CSP doesn't necessarily mean we have to take the lowest price. We can also look at other factors: price, experience, workloads, and things like that that are identified. So it gives us a little bit of flexibility. Back before I came here in 2003 in the Metroplex, everybody was doing CM at risk, and we noticed that the prices were continually going up a little bit. So we being people in the school business... So we being people in the school business basically said, oh, let's look at another way to look at this. So we went to CSP. Lo and behold, the pencil got sharpened, and people, you know, sharpened their pencils. So this will allow us, if the board approves, you know, some of that project. We have done it. In the 2011, we did all of our projects under the CM at risk because it was $1 million and above was CM at risk in the 2011 bond, and anything under the CM, $1 million was CSP. The only project that we completed as a CSP under the 2011 bond was the science labs. And we completed those projects okay. You know, everything went well. You know, we worked with the contractor and everything. So these are two delivery methods that we are, we have used as ISD has used in the past. Any questions on the delivery methods? Administration is recommending that we use construction manager at risk for the reconstruction of Socorro High School, Montwood High School, Americas High School, Eldorado High School, the support services, which is Mr. Raina's technology facility here, and the new middle school.
We're still building that? The technology thing?
It's down low. 2025.
Why do you think he's sitting in the front row?
So that's our recommendations on the, for construction manager at risk. And I'll show you our recommendation. Well, everything else is basically CSP, which is elementary school number 30, 31, the SAC, the multipurpose rooms, the lighting at the baseball and softball fields, the maintenance, which is the warehouse facility, and then, of course, the transportation. So that's the board's recommendations for the delivery methods for the 2017 bond program. I'll answer any questions.
Mr. Iyington, I think the way that you've split up these projects, at this point, this seems to be ideal. I think we've always wanted to take a look in our community with the sealed bid proposals for that reason, to see if we're on target with the price, to see if things have crept up slowly with the CMR process. I think it's going to be good to take a look at this, especially based on Mr. Gonzalez's comment that cost of materials may be going up. These folks may want to take a little narrower profit margin in order to get the work, and we still get quality work. I realize that on these projects, it'll take more work on your staff and on the architect's side because things have to be completed. This is more like when you want to build an extra room in your house, you pretty much have pointed everything that you want done, and you get a proposal, whereas the other one kind of works hand in hand if we're building through. But now I see your complete list here. I think it's a good segregation or division of projects as we move forward. And I realize some of the projects, this is not the order of projects, but this is how we're going to pursue them to get them built.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Mr. Iyington, can I see the slide previous to this one again, please? Okay, thank you.
Administration recommends...
Have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Ms. Nahada. Any for discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Iyington. Next item, 4B. Consider approval, I'm sorry, 4C. Consider authorization to publish RFQ for professional services and RFP for construction managers for the initial phase 2017 bond program. Mr. Iyington.
Yes, that's just basically what I went through in the presentation. We would like the RFP and RFQ authorizations to go out for the solicitation for the first four projects, which are the Socorro High School reconstruction, the new elementary school, 30, the new middle school, and the SAC number 2.
Motion to approve?
Second. Have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Any for discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Iyington.
Thank you.
Next item, 4D, is going to be pulled. We're going to need some more information. We got some information from SE, but we're going to get some more information from AFT. They proposed a letter to us back in 2015 regarding the DACA program. And till we get the information, this item will be pulled. Says there's no other business with the board. It means adjourned at 6:15.